Welcome to the final installment of this election season's Hoboken Quality of Life Coalition Candidate Forums. We have the candidates running in the first, third, and fourth wards this evening. You've all been given an opportunity to prepare questions to be submitted to the candidates. Melissa Abernathy and I, I'm Mary Kelly, are board members of the Quality of Life Coalition, and we'll be reviewing them to make sure that there's not duplication and to make sure that the questions make sense. And then we'll present them to our moderator, Bob Bowden. We're pleased once again to have Bob work with us on the forums. He's been doing this for a number of years, and I'm sure you'll find him to do a great job moving things along and keeping people entertained as well. So the candidates will each be granted a minute for an opening statement. Questions, they'll have a minute and a half to respond to. If there's a need for rebuttal, that will be granted. And there'll be a closing statement of a minute as well. And I think that we also have, from the board, our timekeeper, Tom Chardier. Tom is going to control the candidates as much as he can. From the first ward, our candidates are Michael DeFusco and Teresa Castellano. From the fourth, we have Ruben Ramos, Dana Wafer, and Tim Acapenti. And running unopposed in the third, but here nonetheless representing as candidate is Michael Russo. Thank you so much all for coming, and thank you, audience members, for your participation this evening.
All right. Thanks, Mary. Thanks, everybody, for coming. So the first two debates are already posted at QLCHoboken.org. By the way, I know I, as a voter in town, am going to be going back and looking at those videos from both the school board debate and also the other council debate when making my decisions. So this will also be posted. I'm sure many of you have friends in town who aren't here tonight, and you can direct them, once this is posted, to QLCHoboken.org. I wanted to tell the candidates, I got some new iPhone software tonight. You know, I usually have a random number generator to determine the order of speakers. This is called Names in a Hat, if you want to get it for your own iPhones. Basically, I got everyone's name in here. I hit standard, and then I hit Hoboken Debate, and then I hit Use. And what happens is, I'm going to read the order each time it's randomized. So like, this is a sample. This is not the real one, but I press a button, and this would be Castellano, then Wafer, then DeFusco, then Ramos, then Acapenti, then Russo. And then when you click it again, it gives you the whole list, and so then we'll go through it. So each time, it's going to be random from the phone. And so, a couple of quick notes, too. It's a kind of a smaller, or less deep room this time, so it's particularly important. We don't have talking. If you guys want to have conversations, just step outside the door and then come back. Also, too, the questions need to be general, so questions like, you know, ask so-and-so why he's such a loser would not be, you know, useful for us, or, you know, et cetera. So please make general, public policy-oriented questions that don't seem biased in one direction or another, and that will increase the likelihood that we will have a chance to read them. As always, so I guess we're going to have, as we said, as usual, a 60-second opening statement, and you're going to give, what is it, a 10-second warning? So then he'll give you the white card in 10 seconds, and then after that, then he'll ring the, whatever that thing is. Is that like a bowl or something? Yeah. Is that used for anything in real life? What is that?
I think it's candy dish.
A candy dish? But it's like, it's not even, it's like rolling around.
It's a lot of candy?
Anyway.
It's a challenge.
That's a horrible candy dish. All right, so I think that's it, and so we're going to have opening statements first, so I'll press my randomizer. And as per tradition, we will allow applause at the end of the opening statements, and also the closing statements at the end of the night, but not during the middle. So, here we go. I press Hoboken Debate, and the order of opening statements will be Wafer, Ramos, DeFusco, Russo, Acapenti, and Castellano. And so, for the first opening statement, please welcome Ms. Wafer.
Good evening. God, of course, I have to go on first. My name is Dana Wafer. I'm running for council in the fourth ward. I live in the fourth ward with my husband and our little girl, who we just had eight weeks ago. The reason that I'm running is because I think that the fourth ward deserves much more effective representation than it's getting right now. I have spent the last year and a half working tirelessly at the Housing Authority to bring it into better condition. When I first got appointed to the board there, there were many contracts that were given out unlawfully. The conditions were very bad, and we've struggled through the last year, and we're working hard. We have a new executive director come in, and I think that somebody who can work that tirelessly can really bring a lot to the fourth ward as well. I can expand that, and I would work hard to make sure the streets are clean, to ensure that the parks actually move forward, to include everybody and make sure that we're moving the fourth ward forward. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Ramos.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming, and thank you to Bob and the Quality of Life Coalition for hosting this event tonight. My name is Ruben Ramos. I'm a proud, born and raised resident of Hoboken's fourth ward, husband of Norma and proud dad of Gail, Isabel, and Ryan Ramos. After years of serving as a lawmaker in the Hoboken City Council and in the New Jersey Assembly, I have learned a few things of how government works. First, voters expect and deserve representation that's responsive to the needs of the community. That means listening, listening to, and working with everyone to make sure that people are being heard. We can't play games when it comes to addressing constituent concerns. Fixing a pothole or ensuring clean streets shouldn't be a politically motivative act. It should be done because it's what's best for the neighborhood. Second, when we're facing big problems, we need to have the courage and ambition to work on big solutions. This means leveraging our relationships with public and private partners and investors to make sure that the issues that seem to be eternally ongoing in Hoboken are improved on. Progress has been stagnant for far too long. Finally, people need professionalism and experience in their elected officials. Too many times petty professional disagreements leads to fighting and ultimately inaction. So on November 3rd, I ask you for your vote, because experience counts, and results matter, and I've always delivered on results. Thank you.
Mr. DeFusco.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike DeFusco. I'm a proud Italian-American, born and raised in New Jersey. Twelve years in Hoboken as a property owner, and five years of those as a commissioner on our zoning board. During my tenure, I've advocated projects that have moved our city forward while still, you know, providing the unique character that we know and love about Hoboken. I'm stepping up as a true independent because there's a political divide in town, hampering progress, and I know that I can work with everyone, whether I agree with them or not, to advance the best interests of all my neighbors. To that end, I'll hold the city and the county to task and address common sense, quality-of-life concerns: clean streets, pedestrian safety, real-time repair of potholes, garbage cans on every block. I will use my land use background to encourage innovative uses at the Newman Leather site and the New Jersey Transit site. We need to stop kicking the can on these projects and get to work to push for commerce, arts, and entertainment in downtown Hoboken. I thank Councilwoman Castellano for her participation, as well as the QLC for holding this debate.
Mr. Russo.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who do not know, I'm Dr. Michael Russo, born and raised here in Hoboken, the proud husband of Lisa Russo and father of Leah Grace, and now Jack Anthony. I've served on the city council for 12 years here in the city of Hoboken. I am in a very fortunate position to have no opponent running against me, and I think that speaks volumes. I think that speaks to the job that I've done as a councilman and how I've responded to the constituency that I serve. We have solved many of the issues in the ward, and will continue to do so, but there are some things that need to be handled in the upcoming four years. We need to deal with one of the main issues throughout the entire city is our traffic flow. As we all know, as we drive through the city, we can't get from uptown to downtown without going east, west, and north, and that's really a big problem. So I'm here to answer any questions that are proposed tonight. I'm here so that people understand what my positions are, and I'm here to make sure that the city of Hoboken moves forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Mr. Acapenti.
Hello. My name is Tim Acapenti, and I currently represent Hoboken's fourth ward. Over the last five years, I've worked vigorously to achieve many of my original campaign goals I made when I was first elected in November 2010. That evening, I stated the fourth ward had been forgotten, and it was now time to fight to make our ward a place where we are proud to raise a family, work, or run a business. So I rolled up my sleeves and set an overall goal for our neighborhood: to greatly improve the fourth ward's quality of life over the next several years. Some issues were easy to resolve. We fixed streetlights, filled potholes, added new public trashcans, and improved pedestrian safety. Other initiatives would take a little bit longer but proved worth the effort. Upgraded pocket parks on Jefferson and Jackson Streets, added new play equipment and safety surfaces for resident use. And I am particularly proud of the revitalization of Mama Johnson Field, which we added proper drainage, new athletic turf, and dugouts. All the while, we added new police officers and firefighters to keep our streets safe. Every year, I advocated for municipal budgets that would yield a flat or reduced municipal tax levy, and only voted for those I felt would help move our city forward. I'm proud of these achievements and look forward to discussing the future of the ward here tonight. Thank you.
And Ms. Castellano.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So I am your present first ward councilwoman, Teresa Castellano. I am married to a retired Hoboken detective, Robert. I am the mother of two boys, three dogs, one cat, and one huge turtle. I own and operate, City Discount, excuse me, a family, a successful family retail business on Second and Washington Streets since 1969. I own and I manage and I operate Morton Properties. It is a, we own three multifamily buildings, all in the heart of the first ward and all under rent control. I have a degree in dental hygiene. My service to the city was chairwoman of Historic Preservation Commission, chairwoman of Zoning Board of Adjustment, the president of the Hoboken Business and Industry Association. I was an original trustee for the Hoboken Museum, and I've been inducted in Who's Who twice. Then I was elected to the city council after all of that. My status, I'm so proud of my independent status that I've been able to keep over the years, and my influence, my only influence is what I get from my constituents. A lot of issues were raised here tonight, and they will be discussed as we move along. Thank you.
All right. Let's get down to it, going to the first question. It will be, the order will be Acapenti, Ramos, DeFusco, Castellano, Russo, Wafer. And the question is about the rail yards redevelopment plan. The entire city, particularly downtown wards, will be impacted by the rail yards redevelopment plan. Several community groups have made suggestions about the plan. What do you like about the plan as you see it now? What aspects would you like to change or improve? Mr. Acapenti.
Thank you, Bob. I actually worked on this, this plan being a part of the South Redevelopment Committee for the city of Hoboken, and there's a lot of things that I do like about the plan. I like the, the commercial use that we're looking to bring into the city of Hoboken with the ratables that will go along with it, without the heavy taxing upon our city services that commercial brings. I think it's a good mixed-use plan. However, I do think that one thing that Fund for a Better Waterfront often brings up is the plan does not specifically show the road grid going through the plan. And then I think that that is something that we need to make sure happens within the plan, and that we move forward saying that we want the street grid that was laid out in the city of Hoboken by the Stevens family all those years ago to continue through this redevelopment plan. And there's also been some great feedback from, from residents that have come out from meetings, such as putting, docking garages inside of the buildings, so we don't have, when people move in and out, the trucks on the street. I think that is, is a positive step in the right direction for the plan. And overall, I think it's a good plan. I think the square footage is, is about what we all wanted to see, to move the redevelopment on, on the south end of town forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Ramos.
Thank you very much. I think when you look at the way the redevelopment plan was approved is without the street grid that Mr. Acapenti talks about. I would have voted no and included that in the plan. That's the part of the city council's job as redevelopment agency. So before my vote would have been an affirmative, I would have ensured that the street grid that's consistent with Hoboken's street grid would have went through into the plan consisting of the New Jersey Transit plan, as well as egress access into and out of Hoboken, coming into that plan, and make it easier to get from Hoboken to Jersey City. And maybe, working with Jersey City, it's what their part of the rail tunnel rails are going to be, because while we work on our square footage, maybe limiting ourselves or not limiting ourselves, we don't know what Jersey City's doing. Jersey City's building 70, 90, 80-story buildings. Those 80, 90, 70-story buildings can be on our storefront. We should have worked collaboratively with Jersey City to ensure that that plan is consistent with Hoboken and Jersey City's plan and the future for our Hoboken residents in our terminal, which is one of the most, most highly-used terminals in all the East Coast. So let's look for more commercial uses. Let's look for dynamic activities in the terminal itself, something like a Chelsea Market within that facility, something like a Reading Terminal within that facility in Philadelphia, to have a dynamic uses that everyone could use every single day. Thank you very much.
Mr. DeFusco on the rail redevelopment. No applause, please. Excuse me. No, we don't allow, we don't allow applause during the middle because it then turns into just a shouting match of who can yell louder throughout the night. So we, go ahead.
I'm allowed to.
Mr. DeFusco on the rail yards.
Thank you very much, everybody. Listen, this is very much a central issue to the first ward, and time after time, election after election, my opponent has assured voters, has assured the city, that she would represent them in fairness and work with New Jersey Transit to advance this project. That has not happened. And what we have now is an approval that isn't moving forward on the front of New Jersey Transit, and my opponent has not advocated for the street grid system that the Fund for a Better Waterfront has advocated for, which would in turn decrease the size of buildings while still giving the same square footage that New Jersey Transit's looking for. This is a net, a negative for all of my neighbors along Newark Street that are fearful that their views and their quality of life are going to be diminished. I would like to see the terminal building itself advanced as Mr., as another candidate had said, as a Chelsea Market or as a Reading Terminal Market. This is, this is an area where small businesses can succeed in a maker marketplace environment, and right now, small businesses are hurting. We need to fight to give them spaces where they can produce, where they can sell, and where we can have a community destination, where we can gather, where we can shop locally, and that is the future of Hoboken. I question why my opponent has not pushed for that in the past, and why she's been silent on the issue for this long.
Ms. Castellano on the rail yard.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, my opponent is terribly misinformed. Again, I have been advocating for that street grid to be open to the traffic flow. He, you know, as a candidate, you will say a lot of things that, you know, just to get elected, but anyway, he doesn't do his history, he doesn't do the background. As a redevelopment agency, we can amend that plan many times over. We have a long way to go with New Jersey Transit. We have New Jersey Transit's plan, we have the city's plan, we have the Fund for a Better Waterfront plan, and we're going to have public meetings. So we're going to have input from many, many different areas. We all want the best. We all want the rail yards, we want the commercial, the residential, we want low density, we want scaled down, and I got to say, New Jersey Transit has been pretty neighborhood-friendly. I mean, if you saw that, the scale of what they presented probably four years ago, 75-story glass towers, you know, that's not the plan anymore. And the plan has changed and morphed and morphed down over the years, and I'm very proud and very, I actually was the chair of the New Jersey Transit Residential Development Committee a few years back, and we, we got along very well and understand that they're an autonomous agency. So if, you know, if they want to do what they want to do, we go to court and they win, I would rather have a seat at the table so that we could get givebacks for our city rather than just try to fight them on every issue. Thank you.
Mr. Russo on the rail yards.
Thank you very much. This is an issue that really can't be answered, it's a question that can't be answered in 90 seconds. The reality is, there are many candidates that don't even understand how this is working, how it has worked in the years. I was on this committee in one way or another since I was elected to the city council for almost 12 years. There was an original plan that was a 70-story tower. That plan is no longer viable. It's not something that the citizenry wanted. That was changed. That was changed because of the council representation to make sure that the residents in the city were spoken for. And we continue to do that on the council. As Councilman Acapenti stated, he serves on that committee as well, we've now negotiated many, many terms with this redevelopment plan. That will probably have to be amended again because we're concerned about the, the city's plat, which is that road grid that was referenced a few times. That needs to, that needs to be in the plan. That needs to be very prevalent in that plan. That's just one of the many issues that we, we need to tackle with the plan. But overall, the plan has to move forward. That's an eyesore in the city. It's development that's sorely needed in the city so that our city could thrive more each day. We need to continue to do that. We need to do that as a council. We need to work very well with whomever may be on that council come January. The current committee has been working very well together, and we're going to continue to do that no matter what happens in January.
Ms. Wafer on the rail yards.
The, it's going to have a tremendous impact on the city, and so it's very important that it fits in with the character of Hoboken. I'm particularly concerned about the street grid as well. Obviously, having the street grid go through will open up parking opportunities, it'll make it much more likely to fit in with the character of the city, it'll create more of a pedestrian-friendly area, and so I think that's very important. And I'm, I'm confused about why that wasn't included to begin with, and I think that we're very lucky to have an organization like Fund for a Better Waterfront that charges ahead on those issues and raises them in the public and candidate's consciousness. In addition to that, I think the, the primary concern for this in our area of town is the impact that it will have on traffic. Traffic is a huge issue in the southwest part of Hoboken. It ties into a lot of other NJ Transit issues, such as the light by the light rail, and I, it's important to consider that while looking at the plan to begin with. Not, it's not sufficient to look at traffic studies that come after the fact. It really needs to be part and parcel of the pan, plan, and I'm concerned that that really hasn't been considered. So in all, I, we, we need to move forward with it, we need to get it done, but it really needs to have a second look, and that street grid, the size of the buildings are very important to consider. Thank you.
Okay, we allow rebuttals, by the way, which can be up to 60 seconds. Anyone have any rebuttals in this round? Mr. Acapenti.
Yeah, I got to just point out, if you had read the redevelopment plan, you would know that the street grid does get called for in the wording of the text in the plan. But what a lot of people miss is the, the picture that's in the redevelopment plan. It doesn't exactly look like your traditional road. So I think we need to just make that language and the picture clearer, but the street grid isn't, is in part of the plan. We made sure of that. Also, through the redevelopment agreement process, that's where we can be a lot stronger in our wording and terminology for each site plan calling for specific roads through that redevelopment area. And furthermore, traffic is going to be a big part of that. That's why we insisted as a council that before we move forward with anything, New Jersey Transit has to pay for full traffic analysis before anything else moves forward. So that, that's, that traffic analysis is going to be done before any more votes can take place on redevelopment of the rail yards.
Anyone else have rebuttals on this? Mr. Ramos.
Absolutely. I think, at the end of the day, is a plan on the table, a plan that's going to be built. I mean, it just was approved almost two years ago, and we're no closer today to see any progress happen moving forward. We see no conversations happening. We see no one at the table happening. We see nothing, no progress on either side. It's just completely, as I said in my opening statement, completely stagnant. These things need to move, need to move, needs to move forward together, cohesively, and then bring people together. No one's moving. No one's talking. This plan right now is unbuildable on both sides. Where's the compromise? Where's the compromise? And a city, someone on the city council needs to take the lead on that, and right now, no one's taking the lead on that. Thank you.
Ms. Castellano.
Yes, I just want to point out that Fund for a Better Waterfront has asked to be, to have an audience with the mayor time and time again. We've had, we've had audiences with them, and we've sat down with them, but I just wanted to point that out. It's not for lack of trying to move forward. We're trying to move forward, but ultimately, it's in the mayor's lap, and I think that she's failed in that area.
Go ahead, Mr. DeFusco.
Sometimes it's easy to point fingers. Sometimes, when you sit in a position of power, you don't want to take the responsibility, such as the case in the first ward. If elected to the first ward, I will take a leadership perspective, and I will work with everybody and anybody, including the mayor, including New Jersey Transit, to get these conversations moving. It's so easy to say, oh, well, you know, and find reasons why they're not moving forward. It's time to stop moving these, you know, pushing these things, kicking the can. We need productive representation in the first ward, and for 21 years, my opponent has found political tricks to pull why things can't get done. You know what? It's time to stop the finger pointing. It's time to take accountability. If elected, I will take that accountability. I'm fighting for my neighbors, I'm fighting for the entire ward, the first ward, so I'd like to see how my opponent would respond to that.
Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Bob. Again, I can't stress this enough. It's very difficult to talk about this plan in these 90-second or 60-second snippets, but it's so evident that some people just don't understand the way government works and what we, as council members, need to do. Once we approve our plan, that then gets moved forward back to the administration, and then it moves forward. Either, either they're going to move forward on that, start to build the plan, start to negotiate a redevelopment agreement, or they don't. So if there's any stagnant, if there's no movement at all, there are people that you need to point fingers at. There aren't people that need to take responsibility beyond just council members. And to anyone who continues to question that, I have a very simple question. What would you do?
I think we all have one rebuttal per round. Is that the ruling convention? Yeah, so you guys can work in whatever comments you want later, or in the closing statement as you see fit. Next order of speakers will be Ramos, Castellano, Wafer, Russo, DeFusco, and Acapenti. And I'll try to balance a little bit, but to read the card, it says, "Our mayor has boasted about a 10% decrease in municipal taxes over a five-year period." We don't, I'm not here to confirm that number or not, but that's what's on the card. What is your plan to realize real tax reform? So just to balance and say, or do we need tax reform, or should taxes go up, or stay the same, or go down? Generally, your view on spending, the overall budget of the city, I think, is, is what I'm curious about also, and what should happen with taxes. We begin with Mr. Ramos.
I think that's a, that's a difficult question to answer because we have a surplus, we don't know how that surplus is used. I think $8 million of that $20 million surplus goes to paying debt relief, debt service payments, and then we have $12 million that just disappear into the Netherlands, another universe, and we don't know where that money goes or where that money ends up. I think that money should end up back with the taxpayers in the form of tax relief. That's where it should end up. Or in infrastructure improvements. Let's look at Washington Street. Anyone see the yellow lines that got painted over the last two days? They're crooked. The reason they're crooked is all the potholes a truck had to go to on Washington Street while they were going down Washington Street. It's like someone was driving drunk while driving the truck, those are potholes creating that. I think if we're going to have that surplus, let's use it for our infrastructure improvements that we've talked about so many times. Let's pave our roads, let's keep our parks clean. Look at this park outside, the roller rink. I approved it in 1999, 2000, first elected city council. It's cracked, it's in disheveled shape. Let's get that fixed on the fourth ward. Look at this building. $4.4 million to go for a boathouse uptown. Look upstairs in this building where the girls practice cheerleading four times a week. Disheveled, adults want to play basketball upstairs. This building gets used seven days a week by everyone in our community. Not a boathouse that could use by 30, 40, 50 people in town. Only eight people showed up to that boathouse meeting, by the way. I think this meeting gets senior citizens, children, young adults playing basketball upstairs. Let's invest in our quality of life in this community and in a building like this, and build more throughout this city. Thank you very much.
Ms. Castellano on spending and the taxes and the budget.
Yes, thank you. My taxes have gone up, and they've gone up exponentially every year, and so have my, my constituents. This city, we bond for everything. We're in litigation and eminent domain. That's how this city's being run. It's being run by bike lanes, that's number one, I would think, and parks. Again, streamlined government. We're very top-heavy with directors. I've seen this city run with three good, paid directors. I think the salaries are way too high for what they, for the results that we're getting, namely, the dirty streets, the dirty parks. Everything that we see, every, the weeds, everything that we see, all the complaints that we get from all of our constituents, and we get plenty, comes down to the directors, the mayor, the directors. We call, we give, we give the directors the tools, we give the mayor the tools to implement these programs, and they don't do it. Obviously, it's not being done, because the streets have never been dirtier, the parks have never been filthier, garbage all over the place. You know, it is a travesty that this city is a beautiful city, we pay the highest taxes in the county, probably the state, and we have, we have what you would just call is a mess here.
Ms. Weifer on spending and the budget.
So, the municipality, the administration has done a good job holding line of municipal taxes. The brunt of the tax increases have been from the county in recent years, and both Mr. Acapiti and Mr. Ramos have been an absent voice on that. That being said, there are clearly things that we could be doing better in terms of spending. I think that it is very obvious that we do need to invest more in keeping the streets clean. Perhaps we need more people out there on a daily basis cleaning up the streets, more garbage cans. These are basic constituent services, they're the things that people see when they walk outside their door every day, and that's the job of the ward council person. The ward council person is supposed to advocate for their ward, and that has not been happening in the fourth ward. In addition to that, on the issue of the surplus, maintaining the surplus is a responsible thing to do. It is. And I know that it's a very politically popular thing to say, "Give the money back," but it would amount to very little for individuals, and it helps the city maintain a stellar bond rating. That's a very responsible thing to do, and if I were elected, I would advocate continuing to do that. There are other ways to raise revenue. Something that the city should look at is raising revenue. I know that the city's been aggressive about pursuing grants, I would support that, and would like to expand the grants that we look for. And so, moving forward, I think there are a few things we can do. Look to raise revenue, invest in infrastructure, invest in maintaining clean streets, and keeping the neighborhood, keeping the neighborhood good for the constituents as they come out. Thank you.
Mr. Russo.
Thank you. Again, we have candidates running for office that just simply don't understand certain things. Raising revenue, you can't raise revenue by grants, you just can't. The way you raise revenue in the city is by development. So if you're advocating for development, then that's, I'm all for that. Okay, I understand that, but we're not going to grant our way out of, out of tax relief. The reality is, we do have a surplus year over year, and that's a $20 million surplus year over year. We're not mentioning in that $20 million the additional $5 million in the parking utility. So that's $25 million every year that you, that the taxpayers, everyone in this room, is paying into a kitty, and we're not getting any of that money back. We're not getting any relief when it comes to our tax dollars. That has to change. Now, keeping some of the surplus is responsible, not keeping $25 million of surplus is responsible in no way, shape, or form. It's responsible to get that money back to the taxpayer, reduce taxes in the city of Hoboken, and that's what we need in the city of Hoboken. On top of that, we have to stop spending money. Millions of dollars in the law department, hundreds of thousands of dollars for each director. We're up to what? Seven, eight, nine directors now? This city ran with three directors, and it ran well. The streets were clean, the potholes were filled, as they say, the trains ran on time. That's what we need to get back to. We need to stop wastefully spending, and we need to make sure that we continue to give money back to the taxpayer when we have the opportunity to do so.
Mr. DeFusco on spending and taxes and the budget.
I think we're being a bit short-sighted here. Let's take a look back in 2007, when my opponent was the president of the city council. She presided over a council right before we had a fiscal monitor that was issued to us by the state, resulting in a 48% tax increase. How quickly we forget this. Our credit rating dropped to near junk status under her watch. Listen, I think that we need proactive representation, somebody that's going to look at the streets, somebody that's going to walk the ward, somebody that's going to take to all social media, to any media necessary, to get the word out that the first ward needs help, and to work with City Hall to find that help, examining the budget, making sure that each dollar is spent intelligently. Listen, I don't know, talking about intelligence, I don't know what smart saver out there is not going to keep a savings account. You know, we can't be spending, you know, you know, we can't be spending, you know, every cent that we take in, so, you know, listen, I'm in favor of the budget surplus. I think that we need to take a very close eye in the new year, if elected, to making sure what that surplus is specifically, and where that money is going. Again, I believe that we need communication, and it's so easy to point fingers. We need to take responsibility, and we need to put the money where it is most needed in the first ward. The streets need improvement, we need garbage cans, we need to make sure that pedestrian safety is looked after. These are all things that, you know, haven't gotten done in the last four and a half years. I'll get them done.
Mr. Acapiti on spending, the budget, and taxes.
Thank you. I gotta take you back and fact-check Mr. Ramos on his last statement. We haven't even approved the transit redevelopment plan for a year. That was approved last December, not two years, it's less than a year. And if we're stagnant, it's not the city's fault. Right now, we're waiting for the developer, New Jersey Transit, to come back to us. That's the truth right there. If he'd come to any of the meetings, he might have known that. He's a lot of criticisms, however, he doesn't show up to the public meetings. When it goes to budget workshops, the same, they're all public meetings, everybody is welcome. But time and time again, the candidates who run for office don't actually show up and say something at these budget workshops. I'm there, I advocate for lower budgets, I come up with ideas on how to cut different line items, talk to the directors. When Mr. Ramos was in office as a council person, from 2000, the budget in the city of Hoboken was $53 million. By 2008, it was over $100 million, which led to your 47%, 48% tax increase. That was under his watch. That led to the junk bond rating and the issues that we faced in the city of Hoboken come 2009. Where I think the city is today is a much different place than we were back then. I think that the administration is a good job to stabilize taxes in this city. We currently use the surplus to offset any possible raise in taxes like we did this year. The city's doing its part to keep taxes flat in the city of Hoboken. We cannot control the county, and we cannot control the school board. Candidates must understand that. Sure, nobody likes what the county and the school board does to us, but these are some of the facts. So if you're just saying you're going to lower taxes, you better come up with something that you can really, really say that you can do.
All right, it's time. Rebutts on this issue. Ms. Castellano, I see first.
Yes, thank you. So, when Mayor Zimri came in, she laid off 18 city workers out of the city garage, and that's why we have the mess in the city that we have. As far as the surplus, I'd like to give some back. We do have to keep some for that rainy day. Sandy came, and we bonded for everything. We did not use the surplus at all, which was a travesty. And that's where the budget, too, does not reflect the true spending of this administration, because everything is bonded for. Now, when I was city council president, I started the workshop situations, which hadn't been done before. And because of that, we found that that budget, doing those numbers and doing those numbers, the budget was underfunded by $13 million. So we, as council people, you know, you can pass a budget if you don't know that, because they fudge numbers all the time. But if you know it, it's, it's like a third felony, if you know that it's underfunded and you pay for it, and you, and you vote for that. So we were held responsible for this budget unknowingly. Thank you that we had those budget committee meetings, which I started as city council president. Found it, we had to go with what we went with. We could not pass that budget, which did lead to Judy Tripodi coming in and the state coming in, but it was better than voting for a budget that we knew was underfunded.
Mr. Ramos.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you very much. I mean, you know, talking about the 47% tax increase, I was there for, I thought it was my part of the city council to avoid that tax increase, but unfortunately, things did not go the way I voted. But however, despite of my record, Councilman Acapiti knew my record. Before he knocked on my door, seeking my support, he met with the fourth ward city council the first time. He knew what was going on, he knew what I stood for, but that didn't stop him from looking for my support every single day when he first met with the fourth ward city council. So I think my record at city council is something I was proud of. I moved the city of Hoboken forward, which we went from, I was on the city council at first, what, 38,000 people, went up to the city council, up to 50,000 people, and growing to a beautiful community that it is today. It's where everyone's moving in, having fun, enjoying themselves, but there are still issues that we need to address. And when you address those issues going forward, it takes character, it takes courage to look people in the eye, whether they like you or not, and vote on those issues. I'll give you a couple of examples. Maxwell Place, people came to the council meeting, people wanted us to vote no on that project. Maxwell Place, now we have beautiful residences with a beautiful park, no taxpayer expense that park did. We have Piercy Park, which looks pretty good to me, by the way, right? W Hotel, people throw Monopoly money at me. That hotel now has 100% occupancy rate, paying taxes to the city of Hoboken. So my record is something I'm proud of every single day, and Councilman Acapiti knew that record when he knocked on my door, but looked for my support.
All right, next rebuttal. Ms. Weifer.
I, I, I'm sort of sitting here a little perplexed, because I think that budgets and finances is one way in which I am very distinguished from both of my opponents. I agree with Mr. Acapiti. I think that Mr. Ramos's record on the, on the council and the tax increase that followed that is something that I would have a lot of difficulty running on again, because I would be embarrassed by that. But Mr. Acapiti, as well, has cast politically motivated votes that cost the city money, that caused the city to go dip into the surplus, because he refused to vote for bonding that was necessary. So, in contrast, I've worked on a public agency, I went through the contracts myself, I really delved into things, and we found enormous amounts of savings. In one year at the Housing Authority, we went from an enormous deficit to a surplus, and that is really saying something. Of the three people running for the fourth ward, I'm the only person that's really delved into the weeds and demonstrated a record of being able to figure out finances and get the ship righted.
Any other rebuttals? Mr. Russo, so next.
Thank you, Bob. Again, when we talk about the finances of the city, you know, a lot of times, we always hear the word bonding, and it, sometimes it just baffles me. Everyone wants to bond, and bond, and bond, and bond. It's, it's like going to that credit card every single day. When Christmas rolls around, you don't have the money to go buy those gifts, go to the credit card, and then you gotta pay that off all year. You have to do it time and time again. We bonded $140 million. $140 million. That's $3,000 for every taxpayer in the city of Hoboken. That's what it's going to cost you. Think about that for a second. If we didn't bond that money, you wouldn't have that $3,000, you wouldn't have that $3,000 bill that you have to now pay to the city of Hoboken, because the city wanted to bond for nonsensical things at times. Some of them were important, and some of them warranted that vote, but some of them were absolutely not, and we have to stop going to that credit card time and time again.
Mr., actually, I saw Mr. DeFusco first.
So, I call into question Councilwoman Castellano's statement that she instituted a committee that, that, that would review the budget, because she had been on the council for 12 years before that even happened, approving a number of budgets. She would have been a very senior council person by that time. So, when the 2007 budget came around, she's claiming that she just realized that that's an underfunded budget? I significantly called that into question. Similarly, in 2011, Councilwoman Castellano, as well as Councilman Russo, voted no against the garage bond refinancing. And what happened there, for those that don't know, is that cost taxpayers $4.5 million out of the surplus that they're claiming shouldn't have been there in the first place. So this is laughable. This is absolutely politics at play, and I want all taxpayers to know, and I want all my neighbors to know, that I will always fight for what's in the best interest of the taxpayers and making sure that our money is spent correctly.
Mr. Acapiti was next.
Thank you. The facts speak for themselves. Mr. Ramos voted for every one of the Roberts administration budgets. They went from $53 million to over $100 million. That's where your tax increase came from, because taxes were never raised to cover that spending gap. They sold assets year after year to cover gaps, and that's what happened. And the state fiscal monitor came in and had to raise taxes. Those are the facts. Unfortunately, you know, some of the candidates, Ms. Weifer, you say you're going to lower taxes. It looks great on a shiny flyer, but when you don't have the details to actually back that up, it doesn't do you any good, and it doesn't do the residents any good. When you say you just want the county to lower their taxes, I think we all want the county to lower their taxes, but unfortunately, it's a state formula that comes from assessed property values. What we need to say is lobby our state legislators for them to change that value. That you could say, but just saying you want the county to lower taxes is not going to get it done for our taxpayers in the city of Hoboken. And I challenge anybody, I'll bring it up next time. Thank you.
I think we all had a rebuttal already, right, in that round? So, oh, Ms. Castellano, you didn't? Weren't you first? I believe you referred, I think you already had a rebuttal there. So we'll move on, you can say, you know, you have time later to say whatever you'd like. Let's see, the next order will be Russo, Castellano, Acapiti, DeFusco, Ramos, and Weifer. And this is going to be, I guess, one of my moderator-privileged questions, and it's a matter of public policy, is there a dumb idea, you've heard someone else say, and I'm not going to ask you to attack someone personally, but just as a matter of public policy, something you think would be really dumb, a really bad idea for this city, that you'd like to explain what it is and why it would be bad? And, you know, I guess if you don't have, if you haven't heard a dumb idea, you could pass, I suppose, but what's the worst idea that you hear in these debates or these discussions around town? Mr. Russo.
First of all, there's never a dumb idea. Some are better than others. Some are pie in the sky, but one of the, one of the worst ideas I hear currently in the city is a huge issue in town, and that is spending $45 million for a public park at the BASF site. I just think that's a dumb idea. Absolutely, 100%. I think there's, there's a precedent that's being set right now. There's a property in the third ward that I'm very happy to say, we've worked with the developer on that property, we're getting a public gym, a public park, a public plaza, the first and largest shovel-ready detention system for flooding. We're getting a new road resurfacing, and we're getting all of that for $0, because we worked with the developer, they bought the property, they're deeding it over to the city, and those are good ideas. Those are the way we should be governing. That's, that's what we should be doing, so that our budget doesn't increase year over year. Those are the smart ideas in the city of Hoboken. The dumb ideas are to take a piece of property in the city of Hoboken and spend $45 million to make it into a park, when there's an alternate plan to do that for no cost to the city taxpayer.
Ms. Castellano, what don't you like?
Yes, I have a big, I don't think it's a dumb idea. Eminent domain really, really upsets me, taking people's property. And this seems to be a pet peeve of this administration. They love to eminent domain everything, like they bond for everything. So when I see, I think eminent domain is a great tool to be used when the parties are in accord and they agree, but when they don't agree, especially the property owner, it sends us into litigation. There's one parcel of property that we're looking at, six years of litigation. You know what that's costing us in lawyers' fees, and, you know, when the lawyer makes a phone call, they charge you $150. So they're saying to us, "It's not costing us a lot," but guess what? It's costing us a lot of money. This is for less than an acre of land, and so eminent domain is a problem. I think it could be used properly, but I think that, I mean, we've been in negotiations where the mayor says, "I'm ready to go to court." The BASF is, is another situation. That's six acres. So we're fighting for six years over less than an acre. I can't imagine what this is going to cost us now. Six acres. Thank you.
Mr. Acapiti.
I think, I think it's, Councilman Russo said it pretty well. There really aren't dumb or stupid ideas, there's just difference of opinions on issues, and we're likely to have them. We all have different perspectives in life. You know, one of them that I have right now is the Washington redesign, where right now, the mayor is advocating for an 11-foot travel lane in north-south directions on Washington Street, narrowing that road. I think that's an issue, I think that will cause a backup of traffic. I'm not against bike lanes, I'm not against the dedicated bike lane, but we're trying to put 10 pounds of sand in a five-pound bag, and it's how do we make all these initiatives work to make Washington Street better? And it might just come down to, because people are talking about it when we go door-to-door, is they want Washington Street redepaved. We've already approved the $4 million to upgrade that water infrastructure that's over 100 years old. That had to be done. But we need to get the road paved, we need new traffic signals, and then new crosswalk signs. Other than that, you know, we, we really need to hash out that redesign plan, and it can't move forward without the council's support, because we have to authorize the construction contract. One more thing, when candidates talk about the ward not being clean, or potholes not being filled, please, take out your phones, show me your 311 app that you have, and how many requests that you've put in, because I can go page after page after page on my phone, every time there's an issue that I see, that I put a request in to get it fixed. You don't need to be a council person to do that. If you care so much about the ward, please, show us that.
Mr. DeFusco.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Listen, I come from the private sector. I'm paid to work horizontally, vertical, and vertically in a matrix organization, whether I agree with people or whether I don't agree with people, to get the job done. It really bothers me when somebody says, it's not me. It bothers me when fingers are pointed and solutions are not offered. Now, that's the case that we have right now in the first ward. If you don't agree with bonding, well, propose different funding sources. Be proactive, find them, go out on your own, and then bring them to City Hall, work proactively with City Hall to make those things happen. Over the past four and a half years in the first ward, we saw Piercy Park fail after Hurricane Sandy for repairs for over a year, because my opponent voted no to them. She voted no to Washington Street repairs, Observer Highway repairs, and Sinatra Drive repairs, because she didn't agree with bonding. That hurt the first ward, and no solutions were offered. That bothers me. Innovation in park space, if you don't agree with bonding, again, find a solution. This, it is time in downtown Hoboken to find solutions, work with everybody, and stop pointing fingers. I know that certain people don't have a magic wand, but try to find solutions. That's all I'll have to say on that matter.
Mr. Ramos.
I think the Observer Highway plan, as presently constructed, is a complete disaster for traffic in the city of Hoboken right now. You're going from two lanes to one lane in each direction, it's going to create a complete bottleneck, and then you go with the Washington Street current redesign with the bike lanes, where we should just pave the road, traffic lights, pedestrian safety is what needs to be done there right now. That's what the residents are crying for, so business on Washington Street are crying for. So compound that with Observer Highway, Washington Street, needs to be done, needs to be looked at again. And then, I think the boathouse. Spending thousands of dollars for a study to create a boathouse that costs $4.4 million, that's just asking a lot, when you're looking at what people are currently planning in taxes. So I think the boathouse, while it's a luxury item, I don't think we have many luxury items to go around right now, where people are currently playing with the Hoboken tax rate, with the surplus currently being what it is, there's other issues where we could invest that money a little bit more wisely. I think those are a couple of issues I will look at. Thank you.
Ms. Weifer, anything you don't like?
I just want to circle back to the last question real quick concerning taxes. On my shiny flyer is the link to my website, and if you visit that, you will see that I've actually developed a significant plan addressing taxes. It's not just something shiny I put on, on my flyer, and I am the only candidate in the fourth ward who has developed a platform. Concerning dumb ideas, and I think it's because it's been said so much tonight, I really can't get it out of my head, this idea that bonding is a bad thing. Bonding is a very responsible thing to do, and it's a very fair thing to do. When you think about it, when you're taking out bonds, you're having infrastructure repaired that's going to benefit us for generations to come. It's not just the people here today that benefit from it, so why should we pay for it all off the bat? It's responsible to bond, and I, Councilman Acapenti has held up infrastructure repairs because of his opposition to bonding. And I really think it's an outrageous thing that Washington Street wasn't repaved, that Piercy wasn't repaired because of those no votes. So I think that opposing bonding, because it sounds like a catchy political thing, is extremely irresponsible.
Any rebuttals on this, Ms. Castellano?
Yes, thank you, thank you. So bonding is the way to go, you think so? That's 25 to 30 years on the taxpayers' back. We have to be very careful what we bond for. In one of those bonds, which was Washington Street, which everybody's mentioning, there was a lot of fluff in that bond. So, and besides the fact, if, if that bond passed, Washington Street was going to be ripped up anyway. So if we passed this bond, there was a plan for Washington Street to be ripped up by PSCNG, which was a 24-month situation, which you know is going to be longer than that, and then United Water was coming in to rip it up again. So, we were going to pass a $19 million bond, only to waste taxpayer money that they would be paying for the next 25 or 30 years. And as far as the city garage, again, my opponent is misinformed, the 4.5 million was given to us by the state. If you would pay some attention before the fact that you wanted to be a candidate, you might know that.
Anyone else on rebuttals? Mr. Acapenti.
Thank you. Again, we got to correct the facts here. The boathouse was grant money that the city of Hoboken received to do a design phase for a boathouse, that a lot of people in the city of Hoboken worked very, very hard on. We did not spend any taxpayers' money, that is grant money, 4.1 million. Mr. Ramos, you are absolutely correct, it is a lot of money. But that was not approved by the city council. A lot of people think it was, but it wasn't. That's a decision that will have to be made down the road. The, come back to the bonding, I've been against bonding sometimes, and I've been for bonding sometimes. It comes down to what we're talking about. When it comes down to infrastructure, I approved the bonding so that we could build a new pumping station on the north end of town, so that we can alleviate flooding in western Hoboken. We need to approve these infrastructure projects. They've been approved under the votes that I've cast. You might not agree with every vote that I've cast, but the infrastructure in this city is moving forward because of the votes that I have casted on that city council. Thank you.
Mr. Ramos.
Yeah, I suppose, hey, grant money doesn't come from the tooth fairy either. The fact, you know, the fact that we spent grant money on a boathouse, but the potential to just even build that, put that grant money to other uses then, if that's the case, just even have that conversation, I think is ludicrous to me. Another issue, I think, the Mooney meters, that the city council voted on to put throughout the city of Hoboken to residential neighborhoods. I thought that was another disastrous idea. I think that's something that needs to be looked at again. I know they bonded for that. I'm not sure where that stands today. I know it went to another thing that went to the nether regions of the universe somewhere, but I think that's another issue that needs to just go away and never be heard from again.
Ms. Weifer.
Mr. Acapenti says that he's been for bonding sometimes, and he's been against bonding sometimes, and I think that fourth ward voters, what they have to ask themselves is, if they vote Tim Acapenti into office again, which Tim Acapenti are they going to get? The one that's for bonding for infrastructure, or the one who opposes it for political reasons? And I think that's a very serious consideration.
Any other rebuttals? Mr. De Fusco. Quiet, please. Mr. De Fusco.
My opponent is clearly trying to undermine my credibility as a candidate. I'd like to call her September 22nd, 2011, when Governor Christie did step in after she and the council majority at the ti, the minority at the time, voted no to approving Hoboken University Medical Center. That nearly cost the city half a million dollars in taxes, over 1,000 jobs. Luckily, the state did step in and did save the city out of the careless and reckless behavior of my opponent. I'm specifically responding to the change of status of the garage bond, which she voted no to. As such, that cost the city $4.5 million. If she's not going to take responsibility for it, then she's just flat-out lying.
Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Bob. I just want to correct one thing that Mr. De Fusco just said. The reality is that the city council, under the Roberts administration, was the entity that voted to create the Hoboken Municipal Hospital Authority. So he's actually wrong in what he said. We, the council at the time, were the ones who truly saved Hoboken Hospital. We made sure that that hospital was here in town. We made sure that the hospital was here to serve each and every one of you in times of crisis. That's the reality of what happened with the hospital. But we talk about bonding also, I just want to add, you know, and I'm not here to come to anyone's defense, but I'm actually going to come to the defense of Councilman Acapenti here, because the reality is, sometimes you can vote on a bond. Like when you want to bond for three new trucks for the parking utility, or a new car for one of the directors. Those are the times you don't bond. Those are the times where you say, if you don't have the money, you don't get the car.
All right, so a lot on, on, on housing, and I'm going to read a whole bunch of cards here, and you guys, we just, I think that most logically, so many other issues to do, to divide, there are rent control questions, and there are affordable housing questions, and here's some of it. You're discussing redevelopment, traffic, and commerce, high-rise building for upper-middle-class rents. What about the low-income and affordable housing situation? Next card. Since the city has over 60% renters, how do you plan to protect and advocate for tenants, especially as developers continue to build luxury rentals at skyrocketing market rates, and as realtors encourage bidding wars on rentals? Next, how are you planning to regulate rent control, affordable housing, et cetera? There are people who should not abuse the support system for the community, especially when it is clear they make a good living enough to not live in places like Marineview or properties elsewhere in Hoboken. What's wrong with rent control, or to balance it, what's right with rent control? Do you like it as it is, or should it change? What are you going to do to deal with low-income public housing issues? People are saying they're being forced out. And would you like to see affordable housing, other than a 10% inclusion? So we'll begin all those issues, housing, affordable housing, rent control, beginning with Mr. Acapenti.
Okay, so let's start with affordable housing. At my time on the council, we passed an ordinance reaffirming the city's 10% stake in all new developments that will create new additional units in the city of Hoboken. The plan on 7th and Jackson, just, just that, we were getting 10% affordable in that plan. I think it's a very good thing, it's a very important issue to make sure that we have a healthy, affordable housing stock in the city of Hoboken. We have a lot of units coming offline through Applied. I've also put 40, well, advocated that the administration put $40,000 in this year's budget, so that we can hire a tenant advocate consultant, and a tenant advocate attorney to provide free consultation services to any resident in the city of Hoboken that is